Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the March 12th, 2018 regular meeting of the Watertown Board of Education. I ask that you please rise as Rob McCoskey leads us in the pledge of allegiance and that you remain standing for the Star Spangled Banner performed by our chamber choir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I'd like to take a moment to recognize our chamber choir members. Rebecca Lattala, Skylar Bartosz, Kadria Bikbova, Gianna Biolo, Lily Byrne, Hallie Anne Chapin, Habika Curtis, Bonnie DeAngelis, Allison Dopkins, Jordan Elliott, Megan Gallagher, Jewel Heron, Gabriel Hovey, Hannah Jack, Nicholas Giacovino, Owen Jobert, Aphrodita Kika, Jessica Liano, Finn Lindstrom, Karen Manalo, Declan Manning, Garrett Mitchell, Vanessa Morse, Julia Scolace, Alison Vanderlin, Taryn White, and Haley Zemitis. Thank you, Chamber Choir. As it's Music in Our Schools Month, we will be hearing from them again in just a moment. Mrs. Davidson?
Mr. McCoskey?
Here.
Ms. Rinaldi?
Here.
Ms. Wilk?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Crotty?
Here.
Mr. Vincenzi? Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Ms. Albino?
Here.
Ms. Eastman?
Here.
Ms. Dante?
I am here.
Just a special note, Mr. Vincenzi is at the semifinals of the state hockey tournament this evening at Yale. His son is the coach and we are expecting updates throughout the meeting from him. We do need to add an action item. Ask for a motion to add Action Item Two under N entitled Watertown High School Cheerleading Championship. You have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Just for a note on that, the reason why we added it at the last minute, the location of the championship, New England championship changed. So it's in New Hampshire now and they do have to spend the evening, so they have submitted that field trip request. Moving on to Item E, board members should have received the minutes from the February 26th Board of Education meeting in their Friday packet. Are there any edits or suggestions, questions? Okay. Have a motion for the minutes?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the minutes from the February 26th, 2018 Board of Education regular meeting as submitted.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Motion carries. One abstention. Do you know what? I'd just like to take a moment to thank Mr. Tom Lambert for chairing that meeting in my absence. It was probably one of the most challenging meetings we would have all year with multiple presentations and concerns that the board had to address. So I just want to thank you for that and thank Mindy for the record of that evening. Moving on to Item F. As I stated before, it is Music in Our Schools Month. We, Dr. Parlato was nice enough to highlight our chamber choir members who are here this evening. Music in Our Schools Month is the National Association for Music Education's annual celebration during March, which engages music educators, students, and communities from around the world in promoting the benefits of high-quality music education programs in schools. It began as a single-wide advocacy day in celebration in 1973 and it's grown over the decades to become a month-long celebration. Music teachers celebrate it by offering performances, lessons, sing-alongs, and activities to bring music programs to the attention of administrators, parents, colleagues, and community members. Music connects communities in so many ways and if there was any doubt of that, the chamber choir's rendition this evening certainly proved that. I'd also like to, at this time, speaking of music, we have a former music educator in our midst this evening and our incoming superintendent. I'd like to welcome Dr. Rydel Harrison to the table. As part of our Music in Schools Month, the Watertown Board of Education would like to congratulate and recognize the following students that were accepted into music festivals for 2017-18. These 16 Watertown Public Schools students were selected by private audition and represent some of the most motivated and talented students in the area. When your name is called, please come forward to receive your recognition. We will begin with the Northern Regional Middle School Music Festival. First, Erica Gugliotti. Rose Marie Mitchell. Congratulations. Isha Patel. Emmeline Osborne. Claire Roberts. Charlotte Manalo. Next we have, next we have our Northern Regional High School Music Festival. Students who were selected will begin with Skylar Bartosz. Bonnie DeAngelis. Vanessa Morse. Congratulations.
I know. You're welcome.
Jack Savatsky. Carissa DeShane. Congratulations. And Mei Jiang. The final four students not only were selected to the Northern Regional Music Festival, but they also made the All-State Music Festival, which is the highest honor for a high school musician to earn. First, we have Hannah Jack, who's an alto. Next, we have Karen Manalo, also an alto. Jack Ryan Tenner. And Julia Scolace, alto. Congratulations. We will be doing, we will have a brief moment for photographs after our next part of the agenda. I'd like to introduce Mrs. Poliquin, our music coordinator. Mrs. Poliquin, the floor is yours. We gave you a front row seat.
That's right.
Oh, they tell me of a home far beyond the skies. They tell me of a land far away. And they tell me of a home where no storm clouds rise. Oh, they tell me of an uncowed day. Oh, the land of cloudless skies. Oh, the land of an uncowed sky. Oh, they tell me of a home where no storm clouds rise. Oh, they tell me of an uncowed day.
They tell me of a ho-
They tell me of a ho- They tell me of a home where my friends have gone. They tell me of a land far away. Where the trees are white and the flowers bloom. And it's fair and sweet and the uncowed day. Oh, the land of cloudless skies. Oh, the land of an uncowed sky. Oh, they tell me of a home where no storm clouds rise. Oh, they tell me of an uncowed day. They tell me of a king in his beauty there. They tell me that my eyes shall be whole. They tell me of a land far away. In the city that is made of gold. Oh, the land of cloudless skies. Uncowed sky. Oh, they tell me of a home where no storm clouds rise. Oh, they tell me of an uncowed day. Oh, the land of- Oh, the land of cloudless skies. Uncowed sky. Oh, they tell me of a home where no storm clouds rise. Oh, they tell me of an uncowed day.
If we could ask all students who were recognized this evening and the chamber choir to stand here behind the board for a photograph. So all students who received a certificate this evening and the chamber choir. Mrs. McCoskey.
Steph.
Okay, Steph.
We'll do, we'll be able to do, we'll get it.
Thank you.
How squished can we all get?
Get a squish if you can. You're all friends.
Come in really close. You can come, you can come in between the chairs as well. We're a friendly group. Yes.
We're staying seated.
Okay, and we are going, Mrs. McCoskey is in the red sweater. If everybody could first turn sideways and squish. Follow Mrs. McCoskey sideways and gonna take a picture. As soon as she gets back.
They're not gonna be able to get pictures.
A squish? Red sweater in the middle. Thank you. Want to look to the left? Okay, and one more to the right if anybody on the- And you deserve this paparazzi. That was incredible. Thank you. Please stay and also please join us for the reception. There's cake. I heard there's cake, so. And to those of you who are practicing for the wonderful musical that's coming up this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we applaud your efforts, especially with all the delays we've had in school and snow days. So good luck this weekend.
We also wanted to say thank you for our dinner on Saturday. Thank you for that. In between our rehearsal. Guys, for a card, you deserve it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go that way. Tonight is with great pleasure that I am able to make the following introduction this evening. I'd like to introduce to our community for the first time on an official basis our incoming Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rydel Harrison, who has joined us at the table. Selected and appointed by the search committee from a competitive, highly qualified group of candidates, Dr. Harrison has committed himself completely to the Watertown Public Schools and to the town of Watertown in Oakville. Moving back to this area of the country from North Carolina with the full support of his entire family, Dr. Harrison will begin in our district on April 23rd, 2018. Dr. Harrison, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the warm welcome. I have some remarks that I'd like to make. I'm really, really excited to be here. I want to start by saying good evening to the board. I don't know if I'm more nervous this time sitting in front of you than I was the last time that I was here, but I really am honored to be selected as your school superintendent. I can't tell you how much I've been excited about coming here tonight and mostly about spending time in our schools today. Today has been a wonderful day where I got a great welcome from all of our students and our staff and our administrators and I just want to take a moment and say thank you for that. I also want to take a moment and say thank you to Dr. Parlato for stepping in and keeping the work moving forward. I recognize that I have some really big shoes to fill. I told some of our elementary kids today that the board hired me because I looked just like Dr. Carnimola. And so that they wouldn't be able to tell us apart. And so that was, that was a lot of fun. But I know she's done such a great job in this community and I'm honored to be the person who gets to continue that work. Also want to just say thank you to all of you. Since the announcement came out, I've received so many really nice warm welcomes and well wishes through email and social media and it has really been a nice confirmation to what I thought about this community before I came here and that is that the town of Oakville and Watertown just really, really loves their schools and loves the community and I'm excited to be a part of that. I got some great welcomes from students today and so I just have to, I couldn't take this moment, let it pass without sharing some. One student from Ms. Meneo's class drew a picture of me, which, I love that, right? Like, that looks pretty good. Another student, a first grader, "Dear Dr. Harrison, welcome to Watertown. We are happy to meet you. You look nice. Do you wear a tuxedo?" So no, I don't wear a tuxedo, but I do wear a bow tie. I got another one that "I think that you will be a great intendant." So I've already been upgraded from a superintendent to a great intendant in just a short amount of time. And then I got to meet one of our high school students who asked me if I could, if I could get rid of the spring break so that he could graduate earlier. He's a senior and so he wants a longer summer. So to Maurice, if you're watching, that's probably not gonna happen. Sorry about that. And then the best is, you know, kids can be so caring. And so one of our students drew a map of Watertown for me, just in case I get lost. Isn't that nice? Which has the Rite Aid on there and he has a bank option for me. So this is really, really a thoughtful community and I'm really excited to be a part of it. If someone would have told me 20 years ago that I would have been sitting here as, being introduced as a superintendent, I would have told them that they were crazy. I was a brand-new teacher 20 years ago and it's great to be here with all of these wonderful music students because that's what I fell in love with. I wanted to be a music teacher and I thought I would do that for the rest of my life. And that story for me is a testament to the power of a teacher. That teacher for me is Mr. Krogstad. He was my chorus teacher in high school and after I was walking down the hall humming and a girl told me that I had a nice voice and I should be in the choir, I was like, "Sign me up." She was a senior. It seemed like the right thing to do. Next thing I knew, I was really thinking about this career of what it would look like to be a teacher. And from that moment on, from the day that I stepped into the classroom, I've been focused on how to make the world better through investing in our children. And in every job that I've had since then, whether it was in the classroom or at the district level, that's been a focus of mine and I'm excited to continue that work here. And so I just want to say that I appreciate having all of you here. It's a great testament to how much you care about the students and the community and education and I look forward to being a part of it. Thank you.
I have to say it was probably one of the highlights in my years on the Board of Education, being able to bring Dr. Harrison to our five schools this evening and even visited the police station as well to meet some of the folks there as they are such an integral part of our school system and how we work. I've never been, it's never been so apparent to me in such an immediate way what a great, amazing group of teachers and staff members and administrators that we have. But those students were so excited to meet Dr. Harrison from the high school all the way down to pre-K and kindergarten. It was absolutely the best day I've had in a very long time and they found you very approachable and extremely likable and to see you get on the floor with them and interact with them was really great. We've been thinking about this since we made the decision and we're thrilled that we finally got you in our buildings and I want to thank you for traveling all the way here to meet our community tonight and we look forward to meeting you more in person this evening immediately following our very short board meeting in the media center at the high, the high school library where refreshments will be served. So please all join us and have a chance to meet Dr. Harrison in person.
Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it over to our Student Council Representative.
Hi, happy to be here. I'd just like to apologize in advance if I sound congested. All these snow days have been a real struggle, but I am happy that we have such a big crowd tonight because usually we serve the cake first and then everyone leaves. So this is exciting for me. All right. This year, the faculty and staff of John Trumbull helped to put on the Shamrock Shuffle, which will donate all of its proceeds to Christopher Gray, a previous John Trumbull student who suffers from ALD. The school also celebrated Dr. Seuss with a week of fun. Spirit Days included Crazy Hat and Hair Monday, Fun Sock Tuesday, Mismatch Clothing Wednesday, College Shirt Thursday, and Favorite Character Friday, which was actually held on Monday due to the snow. Chef Folds prepared an amazing breakfast to honor Polk staff for achieving State of Connecticut School of Achievement status. The school would like to thank Dr. Parlato for presenting them with a beautiful banner to be hung on the exterior of the building. Thank you. Lotus Counseling is also offering students after-school yoga sessions on Tuesday and Mrs. Rinaldi will be starting her Bananagrams Spelling Club this week. Dr. Parlato recently presented the proposed 2018-2019 budget to the Polk and Judson PTO groups. Judson Student Council gathered items to donate to the Brian O'Connell Homeless Project, a foundation that assists the homeless by providing food and other needed living essentials. The Invention Convention was held on March 2nd with seven inventions moving forward to the regional competition. Judson also participated in instructional rounds with administrators from Watertown and Bethel School Districts to identify strengths as well as suggestions for improvement in instructional practices. Down at the middle school, Swift recently received an ISS Above Computer Unit donated by Image Beam. It allows students and staff to track the International Space Station as it orbits the Earth. I thought that was wild. Fourteen Swift students also participated in the Invention Convention. Recognize inventors who will be moving on to the Western Regional Invention Convention in Hamden on March 18th are Hannah Eli, Claire Roberts, Gianna Calabrese, and Erin Pisankowski. Here at the high school, our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders have almost completed registration requests, which was done electronically for the first time through Power School for the 2018-2019 school year. On Tuesday, February 27th, our senior class participated in a senior recital which showcased all of their amazing talents one last time before graduation. Lastly, on Thursday, March 1st, the Youth Service Bureau and Delta Club arranged for Mike Smith to speak to our students about the importance of giving back to others and spreading kindness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're a pro by now.
She is. She's a pro.
So it is my pleasure to, for the first time, welcome Dr. Parlato as our interim superintendent at a board meeting and I would ask for your report. Thank you. I'll begin by also welcoming Dr. Harrison to our Watertown Public Schools community and certainly we look forward to working with you and continuing our district's great progress. So welcome to you. We completed our first instructional rounds visit of this year at Judson School and we were joined by four administrators from the Bethel Public Schools who were very impressed with our beautiful school building, the friendliness of our children, and by our teachers' efforts in the classroom. As Paula mentioned, we held a staff breakfast last week at Polk School to celebrate being named the School of Distinction by the Connecticut State Department of Education for the academic growth of the students there. We also placed a banner at the school entrance for all to see. I'd also like to acknowledge the work of our staff at the Shamrock Shuffle on Saturday. Staff members participated by running, walking, and by helping out throughout the day. And as Paula said, in honor of our student Christopher Gray. Particularly John Trumbull Primary School had an awful lot of representation there and I thank Mrs. Mecca and the teachers and staff members for helping out to that extent. I presented the 2018-19 Board of Education Budget to the combined PTOs of Polk and Judson Schools and we have two additional dates for those PTO budget presentations. Tuesday of this week at 7:00 at Swift Middle School, because it won't snow, and Wednesday of this week at 7:00 at John Trumbull. Regarding the March 14th National Student Walkout, which has been planned around the country in response to the tragedy at Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida, families will receive communication from the Swift Middle School and Watertown High School administrators about plans for the schools on that day. Going back to snow, we are up to nine snow days for this school year, which means that if there is another snow day, then school will be in session on Friday, April 20th, which is the Friday of the scheduled April vacation. I'm trying to use a gloomy voice when I say that because... While this is far from the ideal situation, we are legally required to complete 180 school days. I will be monitoring the weather reports tonight and participating in a conference call early in the morning with superintendents in our region and I'll be able to make that decision tomorrow and hopefully, hopefully, we'll be able to get in at least a half a day. Finally, I would like to acknowledge that this is National Public Schools Week, which is sponsored by the National Superintendents Organization, the National PTA, and by a bipartisan committee of Congress. We know that the public schools are the lifeblood of our community and they really are our greatest investment in the future as well as in the foundation of our nation and in the continued progress of our country. So I offer my gratitude for all those involved in the work of and in support of our public schools. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Parlato, and thank you for your first full week as interim. I know firsthand that it was not without an enormous amount of work, so we appreciate you taking on that responsibility. I have a brief report this morning, this evening. Item K, report from the board chair. As Dr. Parlato said, on March 7th, she, together with our business manager, Tom DiStazio, presented the 2018-2019 budget at the first of three presentations. Parents had important thoughtful questions related to the over $600,000 in salaries that we cut from the budget, resulting in the loss of both paraprofessionals, teaching, and secretarial positions in our district and questions on the impact it would have on students and employees moving forward. on students and employees moving forward. Community members also raised questions regarding the increase in health insurance that is the main driver in the overall budget increase. There were critical questions regarding insurance alternatives, and it allowed me to share just how hard the town manager's office and the town council has worked to look at different options in order to mitigate the insurance costs. The bottom line, we must prepare for the health insurance costs based on the actuaries' projections. We can't go through another year where the Board of Education comes up short on insurance. The Board of Education had another $2.5 million in healthcare expenses last year that we had to have the town council appropriate for us, on top of the budget that was approved at referendum. We can't kick the can down the road and have the town end up needing to appropriate more funds for the Board of Education's healthcare expenses. It's not a responsible way to budget. We implore the community to attend one of the remaining budget presentations on Tuesday evening tomorrow at 7:00 at Swift, should we have school, and on Wednesday, March 14th, at John Trumbull at 7:00. There is a lot of room at John Trumbull, so if it is not, if it doesn't happen tomorrow night, please consider coming Wednesday night at John Trumbull. These presentations are the best way to gain a very clear understanding of what the large budget drivers are, where the reductions will take place, our areas of savings, revenue opportunities, and areas of continued progress in the district. As always, the presentation attendees will have the opportunity to ask questions and engage in open discussion. I just want to thank the PTOs and the PTSOs for assisting us again in coordinating these presentations with their principals and allowing them to take place during their monthly meetings. Quite frankly, as always, our PTOs are at the forefront of really providing the most important information to our school community, and we thank them for that. Moving on to item L. Okay, uh, we're going to go back, thank you, Mr. Lambert, to item J, our first round of public participation. Do any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Please step up to the microphone. State your name and address. I believe the young lady was first. Thank you.
I'm Natalie Lindstrom, 192 Ball Farm Road, Oakville.
Welcome, Natalie.
As a member of the WHS Girls Swim and Dive Team, I would like to share the following information. On Friday, March 16th, from 2:30 to 5:30 PM, the Watertown High School Girls Swim and Dive Team will be conducting their Swim for Gym fundraiser at the WHS pool. A hundred percent of all donations will go directly to Jim Dreher, the sports editor of the Town Times newspaper, to support him as he continues his battle with cancer. Mr. Dreher has covered Watertown High School sports for many years, highlighting the scores, successes, and accomplishments of our team gym athletes. He has played a significant and important role in supporting the Watertown High School community through his writing. As a team, we feel strongly that it's our turn to support him. Thirteen members of our team, along with the head coach and two members of the WHS Boys Swim Team, have each committed to swimming 100 laps and are collecting donations either by a pledge-per-lap basis or by a donation of choice. Our collection ends on March 23rd. We'd like to thank Mrs. Crotty for helping us spread the word of our fundraiser, and also extend an invitation to the Watertown community to stop by the pool this Friday as we show our support in Swim for Gym. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Yes, it's Roberta Crispino, 681 Main Street, Apartment 2F, right in Watertown. Dr. Harrison, welcome.
Thank you.
I've lived in Watertown for 43 years. I've been in school every year since I started kindergarten in one capacity or another, either as a student or a teacher. Uh, 31 years was full-time. Music education. Are you vocal or instrumental?
Vocal.
Were you born in Chapel Hill?
Uh, in New Jersey.
In New Jersey.
So, and, um, just so we're clear on public participation, questions are great, but they're, um, we usually don't answer the questions at public participation. We can answer them at a later time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. One, um, you have a master's in divinity, correct? U, u, obantu. Are you familiar with the term, obantu?
As I said, we don't ask any direct questions of people at the, at the board table during public participation, so if you have a statement you want to make or questions you want to have answered at a later date, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
So, from this point forward, any questions that you have, you can direct to the board, and then we'll get back to you with the answers, or you can make any statements that you'd like to make.
Okay.
Thank you.
It usually takes me three times to get it right.
So, we're on two.
The more mistakes, the more mistakes I make, the more I learn. Ubantu, uh, in the, uh, it's a central tenet of the African philosophy, the essence of what it is to be human. The word, I, I believe translates to me, we. This is a book about Mother Teresa. Uh, Reverend Desmond Tutu said of the obantu of Mother Teresa, "She showed that the only way we can ever be human is together. The only way we can be free is together." Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to committee reports. Item L, Mrs. Rinaldi, curriculum instruction.
Yes, Madam Chair, we met prior to our 7:30 board event meeting to discuss our district accountability index presented by Dr. Parlato and the district's action steps for the 2018-19 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. For policy and labor with Mr. Vissensi, I will share in his absence that we are about to begin our negotiations with the Custodial and Secretarial Union, and I'd like to thank Kathy Rinaldi and Tom Lambert for joining me on that negotiation team, also to Mr. DiStazio as well. Moving on to Mr. Lambert for budget and finance.
The only, uh, thing that I have to report is, uh, I hope that anybody can turn out on the PTO budget presentation. Please do. Lot of information to hear, and hopefully, uh, we can present a, a good and solid budget for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, and back to you for facilities.
No report at this time.
And Mr. McCowsky, governance and community engagement.
No report at this time.
All right. Madam Secretary, item M, any communications?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Moving on to item N, action items, adoption of items to be approved by consent. Board members received an out-of-state field trip request to Boston, Massachusetts from Ms. Burz, a teacher at Swift, and she is requesting permission for an out-of-state field trip to Boston for 23 students and six chaperones, for the robotics team to compete in the New England District Championship on April 11th through 14th. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the Watertown High School robotics team out-of-state field trip to Boston, Massachusetts from April 11th through April 14th, 2018, for approximately 23 Watertown High School students and six chaperones as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The second item, we added to the agenda early on, the field trip for the Watertown High School cheerleading team. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the Watertown High School cheerleading field trip for 12 students to Southern New Hampshire University on March 16th and 17th, 2018, to participate in the New England Regional Championships as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item O, future agenda items and any board member comments at this time. Okay? Yes?
Madam Chair, um, can we have them sing the National Anthem before every meeting? Just asking.
That would be really nice, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm going to have to refrain from answering that right now. To the chair? Yes. Um, is there a GoFundMe page for that benefit, this one benefit? That we can? No, you can make a donation, um, through check or cash. Um, I'd be happy to bring it to them. I do already have some for them, or you can go by, to the high school Friday night and drop it off to them. I believe it's 5:00 to 7:00. Is she still here? Natalie?
Uh, 2:30 to 5:30.
2:30 to 5:30. Thank you. Glad for the clarification.
Also donation buckets in the Watertown High School main office and also in Mr. Cattuccio, the athletic director's office. Natalie also has a list of swimmers who are coming to the Watertown.
Okay, so to answer your question at the high school main office, Mr. Cattuccio, the athletic director's office, or any time between 2:30 and 5:00 at the high school's, um, pool on Friday. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Moving on to P, our last round of public participation. Do any other members wish, of the audience, wish to address the board this evening? Please state your name and address.
My name's Jewel. I live at 201 Laurel Street. Uh, I just want to say thank you for allowing us to perform here tonight, and also just want to, uh, self-promote, uh, the musicals this weekend, as they said, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, uh, Friday and Saturday at 7:30 PM and 2:00 on Sunday. Tickets are $10 in advance. Uh, you can call Watertown Parks and Rec, or if you have a student at Watertown High, you can send them in, and they can purchase them at, um, their lunch wave. We'll just be there selling tickets all week, uh, probably Thursday is the last day. Um, there are students from every grade, every circle of the school, and it's one of the few places where everyone comes together to put something out there, so we want to get as many people there as we can to show what we can do.
Thank you very much, and good luck this weekend. So, the addition of the Sunday performance is new this year, the matinee at 2:00, um, due to the high demand that we've had in the past and, um, the excitement over this production, so we're thrilled.
Can you buy the tickets at the door also?
Yes, you can also buy them at the door. Okay, moving on to item Q, our la, uh, entertaining motion to adjourn.
No motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned. Please join us in the media center for welcome re-